You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[12.11][12.11]12.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[19.11][19.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[26.11][26.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming[33.11][33.11] elections.[34.11][34.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[37.11][37.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[44.11][44.11] [S02] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[51.11][51.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[58.11][58.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[65.11][65.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[72.11][72.11] upcoming elections.[73.11][73.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[76.11][76.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[83.11][83.11] [S03] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[89.11][89.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[96.11][96.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[103.11][103.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[110.11][110.11] upcoming elections.[111.11][111.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[114.11][114.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[121.11][121.11] [S04] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[128.11][128.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[135.11][135.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[142.11][142.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[149.11][149.11] upcoming elections.[150.11][150.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[153.11][153.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[160.11][160.11] [S05] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[167.11][167.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[174.11][174.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[181.11][181.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[188.11][188.11] upcoming elections.[189.11][189.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[192.11][192.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[199.11][199.11] [S06] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[206.11][206.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[213.11][213.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[220.11][220.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[227.11][227.11] upcoming elections.[228.11][228.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[231.11][231.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[238.11][238.11] [S07] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[245.11][245.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[252.11][252.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[259.11][259.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[266.11][266.11] upcoming elections.[267.11][267.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[270.11][270.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[277.11][277.11] [S08] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[284.11][284.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[291.11][291.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[298.11][298.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[305.11][305.11] upcoming elections.[306.11][306.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[309.11][309.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[316.11][316.11] [S09] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[323.11][323.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[330.11][330.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[337.11][337.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[344.11][344.11] upcoming elections.[345.11][345.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[348.11][348.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[355.11][355.11] [S10] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[362.11][362.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[369.11][369.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[376.11][376.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[383.11][383.11] upcoming elections.[384.11][384.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[387.11][387.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[394.11][394.11] [S11] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[401.11][401.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[408.11][408.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[415.11][415.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[422.11][422.11] upcoming elections.[423.11][423.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[426.11][426.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[433.11][433.11] [S12] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[440.11][440.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[447.11][447.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[454.11][454.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[461.11][461.11] upcoming elections.[462.11][462.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[465.11][465.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[472.11][472.11] [S13] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[479.11][479.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[486.11][486.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[493.11][493.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[500.11][500.11] upcoming elections.[501.11][501.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[504.11][504.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[511.11][511.11] [S14] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[518.11][518.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[525.11][525.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[532.11][532.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[539.11][539.11] upcoming elections.[540.11][540.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[543.11][543.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[550.11][550.11] [S15] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[557.11][557.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[564.11][564.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[571.11][571.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[578.11][578.11] upcoming elections.[579.11][579.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[582.11][582.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[589.11][589.11] [S16] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[596.11][596.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[603.11][603.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[610.11][610.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[617.11][617.11] upcoming elections.[618.11][618.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[621.11][621.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[628.11][628.11] [S17] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[635.11][635.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[642.11][642.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[649.11][649.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[656.11][656.11] upcoming elections.[657.11][657.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[660.11][660.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[667.11][667.11] [S18] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[674.11][674.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[681.11][681.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[688.11][688.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[695.11][695.11] upcoming elections.[696.11][696.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[699.11][699.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[706.11][706.11] [S19] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[713.11][713.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[720.11][720.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[727.11][727.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[734.11][734.11] upcoming elections.[735.11][735.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[738.11][738.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[745.11][745.11] [S20] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[752.11][752.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[759.11][759.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[766.11][766.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[773.11][773.11] upcoming elections.[774.11][774.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[777.11][777.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[784.11][784.11] [S21] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[791.11][791.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[798.11][798.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[805.11][805.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[812.11][812.11] upcoming elections.[813.11][813.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[816.11][816.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[823.11][823.11] [S22] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[830.11][830.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[837.11][837.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[844.11][844.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[851.11][851.11] upcoming elections.[852.11][852.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[855.11][855.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[862.11][862.11] [S23] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[869.11][869.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[876.11][876.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[883.11][883.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[890.11][890.11] upcoming elections.[891.11][891.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[894.11][894.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[901.11][901.11] [S24] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[908.11][908.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[915.11][915.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[922.11][922.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[929.11][929.11] upcoming elections.[930.11][930.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[933.11][933.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[940.11][940.11] [S25] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[947.11][947.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[954.11][954.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[961.11][961.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[968.11][968.11] upcoming elections.[969.11][969.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[972.11][972.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[979.11][979.11] [S26] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[986.11][986.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[993.11][993.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1000.11][1000.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1007.11][1007.11] upcoming elections.[1008.11][1008.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1011.11][1011.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1018.11][1018.11] [S27] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1025.11][1025.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1032.11][1032.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1039.11][1039.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1046.11][1046.11] upcoming elections.[1047.11][1047.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1050.11][1050.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1057.11][1057.11] [S28] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1064.11][1064.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1071.11][1071.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1078.11][1078.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1085.11][1085.11] upcoming elections.[1086.11][1086.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1089.11][1089.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1096.11][1096.11] [S29] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1103.11][1103.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1110.11][1110.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1117.11][1117.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1124.11][1124.11] upcoming elections.[1125.11][1125.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1128.11][1128.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1135.11][1135.11] [S30] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1142.11][1142.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1149.11][1149.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1156.11][1156.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1163.11][1163.11] upcoming elections.[1164.11][1164.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1167.11][1167.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1174.11][1174.11] [S31] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1181.11][1181.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1188.11][1188.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1195.11][1195.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1202.11][1202.11] upcoming elections.[1203.11][1203.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1206.11][1206.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1213.11][1213.11] [S32] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1220.11][1220.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1227.11][1227.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1234.11][1234.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1241.11][1241.11] upcoming elections.[1242.11][1242.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1245.11][1245.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1252.11][1252.11] [S33] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1259.11][1259.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1266.11][1266.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1273.11][1273.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1279.11][1279.11] upcoming elections.[1280.11][1280.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1283.11][1283.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1289.11][1289.11] [S34] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1296.11][1296.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1303.11][1303.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1310.11][1310.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1317.11][1317.11] upcoming elections.[1318.11][1318.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1321.11][1321.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1328.11][1328.11] [S35] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1335.11][1335.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1342.11][1342.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1349.11][1349.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1356.11][1356.11] upcoming elections.[1357.11][1357.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1360.11][1360.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1367.11][1367.11] [S36] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1374.11][1374.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1381.11][1381.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1388.11][1388.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1395.11][1395.11] upcoming elections.[1396.11][1396.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1399.11][1399.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1406.11][1406.11] [S37] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1413.11][1413.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1420.11][1420.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1427.11][1427.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1434.11][1434.11] upcoming elections.[1435.11][1435.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1438.11][1438.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1445.11][1445.11] [S38] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1452.11][1452.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1459.11][1459.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1466.11][1466.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1473.11][1473.11] upcoming elections.[1474.11][1474.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1477.11][1477.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1484.11][1484.11] [S39] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1491.11][1491.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1498.11][1498.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1505.11][1505.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1512.11][1512.11] upcoming elections.[1513.11][1513.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1516.11][1516.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1523.11][1523.11] [S40] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1530.11][1530.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1537.11][1537.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1544.11][1544.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1551.11][1551.11] upcoming elections.[1552.11][1552.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1555.11][1555.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1562.11][1562.11] [S41] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1569.11][1569.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1576.11][1576.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1583.11][1583.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1590.11][1590.11] upcoming elections.[1591.11][1591.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1594.11][1594.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1601.11][1601.11] [S42] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1608.11][1608.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1615.11][1615.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1622.11][1622.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1629.11][1629.11] upcoming elections.[1630.11][1630.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1633.11][1633.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1640.11][1640.11] [S43] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1647.11][1647.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1654.11][1654.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1661.11][1661.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1668.11][1668.11] upcoming elections.[1669.11][1669.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1672.11][1672.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1679.11][1679.11] [S44] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1686.11][1686.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1693.11][1693.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1700.11][1700.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1707.11][1707.11] upcoming elections.[1708.11][1708.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1711.11][1711.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1718.11][1718.11] [S45] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1725.11][1725.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1732.11][1732.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1739.11][1739.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1746.11][1746.11] upcoming elections.[1747.11][1747.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1750.11][1750.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1757.11][1757.11] [S46] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1764.11][1764.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1771.11][1771.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1778.11][1778.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1785.11][1785.11] upcoming elections.[1786.11][1786.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1789.11][1789.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1796.11][1796.11] [S47] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1803.11][1803.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1810.11][1810.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1817.11][1817.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1824.11][1824.11] upcoming elections.[1825.11][1825.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1828.11][1828.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1835.11][1835.11] [S48] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1842.11][1842.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1849.11][1849.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1856.11][1856.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1863.11][1863.11] upcoming elections.[1864.11][1864.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1867.11][1867.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1874.11][1874.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1881.11][1881.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1888.11][1888.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1895.11][1895.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1902.11][1902.11] upcoming elections.[1903.11][1903.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1906.11][1906.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1913.11][1913.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1920.11][1920.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1927.11][1927.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1934.11][1934.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1941.11][1941.11] upcoming elections.[1942.11][1942.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1945.11][1945.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1952.11][1952.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1959.11][1959.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[1966.11][1966.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[1973.11][1973.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[1980.11][1980.11] upcoming elections.[1981.11][1981.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[1984.11][1984.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[1991.11][1991.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[1998.11][1998.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2005.11][2005.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2012.11][2012.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2019.11][2019.11] upcoming elections.[2020.11][2020.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2023.11][2023.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2030.11][2030.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2037.11][2037.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2044.11][2044.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2051.11][2051.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2058.11][2058.11] upcoming elections.[2059.11][2059.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2062.11][2062.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2069.11][2069.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2076.11][2076.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2083.11][2083.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2090.11][2090.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2097.11][2097.11] upcoming elections.[2098.11][2098.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2101.11][2101.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2108.11][2108.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2115.11][2115.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2122.11][2122.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2129.11][2129.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2136.11][2136.11] upcoming elections.[2137.11][2137.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2140.11][2140.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2147.11][2147.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2154.11][2154.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2161.11][2161.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2168.11][2168.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2175.11][2175.11] upcoming elections.[2176.11][2176.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2179.11][2179.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2186.11][2186.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2193.11][2193.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2200.11][2200.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2207.11][2207.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2214.11][2214.11] upcoming elections.[2215.11][2215.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2218.11][2218.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2225.11][2225.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2232.11][2232.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2239.11][2239.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2246.11][2246.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2253.11][2253.11] upcoming elections.[2254.11][2254.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2257.11][2257.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2264.11][2264.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2271.11][2271.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2278.11][2278.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2285.11][2285.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2292.11][2292.11] upcoming elections.[2293.11][2293.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2296.11][2296.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2303.11][2303.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2310.11][2310.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2317.11][2317.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2324.11][2324.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2331.11][2331.11] upcoming elections.[2332.11][2332.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2335.11][2335.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2342.11][2342.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2349.11][2349.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2356.11][2356.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2363.11][2363.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2370.11][2370.11] upcoming elections.[2371.11][2371.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2374.11][2374.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2381.11][2381.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2388.11][2388.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2395.11][2395.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2402.11][2402.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2409.11][2409.11] upcoming elections.[2410.11][2410.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2413.11][2413.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2420.11][2420.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2427.11][2427.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2434.11][2434.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2441.11][2441.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2448.11][2448.11] upcoming elections.[2449.11][2449.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2452.11][2452.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2459.11][2459.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2466.11][2466.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2473.11][2473.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2480.11][2480.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2487.11][2487.11] upcoming elections.[2488.11][2488.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2491.11][2491.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2498.11][2498.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2505.11][2505.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2512.11][2512.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2519.11][2519.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2526.11][2526.11] upcoming elections.[2527.11][2527.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2530.11][2530.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2537.11][2537.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2544.11][2544.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2551.11][2551.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2558.11][2558.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2565.11][2565.11] upcoming elections.[2566.11][2566.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2569.11][2569.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2576.11][2576.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2583.11][2583.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2590.11][2590.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2597.11][2597.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2604.11][2604.11] upcoming elections.[2605.11][2605.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2608.11][2608.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2615.11][2615.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2622.11][2622.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2629.11][2629.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2636.11][2636.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2643.11][2643.11] upcoming elections.[2644.11][2644.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2647.11][2647.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2654.11][2654.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2661.11][2661.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2668.11][2668.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2675.11][2675.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2682.11][2682.11] upcoming elections.[2683.11][2683.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2686.11][2686.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2693.11][2693.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2700.11][2700.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2707.11][2707.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2714.11][2714.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2721.11][2721.11] upcoming elections.[2722.11][2722.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2725.11][2725.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2732.11][2732.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2739.11][2739.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2746.11][2746.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2753.11][2753.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2760.11][2760.11] upcoming elections.[2761.11][2761.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2764.11][2764.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2771.11][2771.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2778.11][2778.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2785.11][2785.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2792.11][2792.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2799.11][2799.11] upcoming elections.[2800.11][2800.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2803.11][2803.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2810.11][2810.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2817.11][2817.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2824.11][2824.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2831.11][2831.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2838.11][2838.11] upcoming elections.[2839.11][2839.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2842.11][2842.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2849.11][2849.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2856.11][2856.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2863.11][2863.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2870.11][2870.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2877.11][2877.11] upcoming elections.[2878.11][2878.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2881.11][2881.11] The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.[2888.11][2888.11] [S49] You are watching the W L A F Meet the Candidates Forum live.[2895.11][2895.11] During this program you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette.[2902.11][2902.11] To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450.[2909.11][2909.11] Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and[2916.11][2916.11] upcoming elections.[2917.11][2917.11] Personal questions will be screened out.[2919.11]
Well, what we've done, all of the candidates were given the questions in advance. Tonight, we randomly selected the questions. They will not all be receiving the same question, Jim. We're going to mix it up a little bit. Everybody will have two minutes to answer their question. We have a countdown over in the corner, and then we're just going to, after that, we'll take some questions from the community. You all can call in now with your questions. We have people standing by to get those, so feel free to start calling those in.
In a two-minute timeframe here we're talking about, so two minutes, so we will offer time cues, as mentioned. We will go to our first candidate, Tyler Demont, and we will begin with you, Tyler.
Thank you, WLF, and Jim and Susan for having this. I think this is a wonderful time for the public to get to know the candidates. You know, I'd like to start off, I am Tyler Demont. I'm 27 years old. I'm married to my wife, Ashley Demont. We have two handsome boys, Bentley and Grayson. I am the son of Vanessa Demont and Stephen Parton. You know, I've lived here in LaFollette my whole life, was born and raised here. My heart belongs to LaFollette, and I, you know, I'm wanting to run for this seat in LaFollette City Council to give back to the community, you know, to make sure that our community gets what it deserves. That's my opening statement. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you, Tyler.
Let's switch now to Tyler's seatmate here in the studio, Mr. Mike Evans. Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Evans, running for the city council position here in LaFollette. I'm also a resident of LaFollette. I was born and raised here. I spent most of my adult career working out of state, you know, for different companies, and we moved back when our children were still young. Married to Rebecca Evans. I know a lot of people know her from playing drums in church and singing in choir, so everyone knows her more than they do me. Just a couple of things on what I'm wanting to bring to the city council is organization, leadership, and transparency. Transparency is a big key in any government operation, because I think the citizens should be informed on everything that happens in their government entity, and the more we can be transparent, the better off I think we can be. And a couple of things that I would like to do if elected is to get involved more with the people in the city in the ways of a town hall environment. Invite the people out down to city hall for a town hall meeting to discuss ideas from the citizens, get more citizen involvement, try to get the attendance up at all the meetings, the workshops, the city council meetings, really get a group environment from the citizens of LaFollette. I think that would go a long way in improving a lot of stuff, because myself, I don't have all the answers, no one does, but how you get those answers is getting the people involved, getting them to come in to different town hall environments. I personally would like to have at least four of them a year, and I'd like to have them for the citizens, and then also have a couple a year for the businesses that's located in LaFollette, to see if there's any opportunities that we can help them with and grow their business, because if they grow, we grow. It's all about growth and prosperity. Thank you.
Very good, Mike. Thank you.
We are in the introduction section of our Meet the Candidates tonight here on WLF. We now go to Mark Hoskins. Mark?
Hello, my name is Mark Hoskins. I also am a candidate for city council. Born and raised in the city of LaFollette. Educated, of course. I married lovely Sherri Wilson Hoskins. Have a daughter, Miranda, who is married now to Jared Davis. Have a grandson, Cash, who attends Jack's Barrel Mentor School. I have served on council for four years, from 18 to 22. We made a lot of leaps and bounds in some areas, and small adjustments in others, but I'd like to have the opportunity to represent you in the city, on the city council, and try to improve a little bit more. Thank you.
Mark, thank you. It is Meet the Candidates 2024 here on WLF. We now go to candidate Wayne Kitsch. Wayne?
My name's Wayne Kitsch. I'm seeking reelection for the city council of LaFollette. I was born in 1949. I'm married to Levada McCullough Kitsch. We have three children. We have five grandsons. We've got two great-grandkids and one on the way, be here in November. My career was spent in education. I was a head basketball coach at Win High School for 17 years. I was also assistant principal, a principal, a supervisor, and assistant school superintendent. I retired in 2002. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
It is Meet the Candidates 2024 here on WLF. Johnny McDonald is a candidate here, and we now go to Johnny. Johnny?
Good afternoon. I'm Johnny McDonald, candidate for council of the city of LaFollette. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Donna, 39 years come November. Have two children, Haley and Tori, who were born and raised here in LaFollette, participating in sports and various church activities and community activities as they grew up. And my wife and I were both involved in those activities, coaching basketball, junior pro, junior minor, T-ball, junior pro, junior minor, T-ball assistant. I assisted in middle school football, and during that time, we were active in the LaFollette Boosters Club. Also, was a public address announcer during the middle school basketball games. I operated the clock during that time, and whatever other activities, we could help with the community. I am a retired state trooper of 33 years. I currently am employed as a security officer for the federal court system, and worked there Monday through Friday in Knoxville. I bring to the table a graduate of the University of Northwestern's Command Staff School, where we deal with budgets, resource allocations, purchasing, employee and employer laws, and how to handle employees and employers' needs and demands during employment. Also, am a graduate of the National Academy, which is an upper-level management course for police officers. And the reason I'm running for this is I want to bring a different perspective to the city council. I feel like that my training, my experience as a state trooper, gives me the ability to listen and understands the importance of listening and asking appropriate questions to solve and resolve a problem or come to an appropriate plan. I appreciate your time. Again, I'm Johnny McDonald.
Johnny, thank you. Our candidates tonight, Tyler Demont, Mike Evans, Mark Hoskins, Wayne Kitsch, Johnny McDonald, Jimmy Marlowe, a candidate not able to make it here tonight. We now go to the question round for the city council candidates. Each candidate has two minutes in which to answer questions, and we begin with Tyler Demont. And Susan, we'll let you ask the first question.
All right. Tyler, can you explain your understanding of the role of a city council member?
Yes, Susan. So from my understanding, the role of a city council member would be, number one, providing the leadership of that city. You know, not only providing leadership, but they also set the policies for our city. You know, of course, if it's voted on and passed, it becomes policy. Another one would be voting on the city personnel, who comes in, who goes out. You know, I'm against that. I don't think that it should be up to the full city council members to vote whether or not somebody's hired. That should be left to your department heads. And then also budgeting would be another one. You know, you run off types of budgets, grants, and just all the money that is for the city. So that's my understanding for the city council role.
Thank you, Tyler. We go to Mike Evans. Mike, your question is, are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to municipal governments?
Yes, Jim. I'm very familiar with them, because I've studied them very heavily the last couple of years. I know the charter, top to bottom, all seven main articles of them, and I think that's where we need to make a huge improvement, is following the charter, because that's our operating standard procedures right there issued by the state of Tennessee through legislative vote. We don't have an option of not following the charter. It's an absolute. So I think my prior leadership with different companies can bring a different perspective on the actual implementation of the charter along with the municipal codes, because I think that's where we hold them accountable at all levels. And as far as the voting, the city council, the four city council members are the governing body of the city. They're the absolute highest authority, even though they cannot give direct orders to any subordinates, they have to go through the city administrator. They're still the highest governing body, and there's a lot of responsibility goes with that, and you need experience and background of being in leadership positions in order to properly execute that authority, where we don't get into trouble by violating the different laws and codes, and especially the charter, you know, because that's happened a few times in the past few years, and because we need a thorough understanding. The proper meeting, we need to have a very professional meeting. It needs to be followed exactly by the way Robert's Rules of Order dictate, because we adopted those as a city in May of 2021. And I think that goes a long way by following those rules. That also alleviates problems in Robert's Rules of Order. In simple terms, is supplying order to what otherwise would be chaos in an official meeting, the parliamentary procedures. That's basically the simple gist of it. I was, I operated under Robert's Rules of Order for almost 30 years in big corporations. I've sat in on hundreds of meetings where we had to follow them. It was an absolute, there was no option.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Mark Hoskins, your first question of the night is, how will you work with local businesses to support their growth?
I was in office, again, as I said, between 18 and 22, and on a weekly, sometimes monthly basis, I'd go around to the local businesses, of course, the downtown businesses primarily, visit, talk to them, see what the city could do to help them with what problems they may have, and what problems we could help them with. The larger box stores, of course, you don't have that kind of a communication level with them, but basically check on their needs on a timely basis.
Okay. We appreciate that, Mark. Thank you. Mr. Kitsch, you ready for your next question, or your first question of the night? Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Kitsch, if you received a $1 billion grant to use for the city-town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
If we could use a grant like that any way we wanted to, I would split that grant evenly among the businesses downtown and make sure that they use that for upgrading their particular building that they own, make it look good, be more attractive. That's how I would use it.
Very good. We now go from Wayne Kitsch to Johnny McDonald. Susan?
All right. Mr. McDonald, could you please explain your understanding of the role of a city council member?
Basically, the city council member is the gatekeeper, if you will, of the city operations. We oversee budgets, finance, and ensure that that is being properly applied by law, and making sure that we operate within the laws and municipal codes that govern the city Thank you.
Johnny, thank you. We appreciate that. We go to our next question. This is for Tyler Demont. Tyler, starting the second round of questions. Are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to the municipal governments?
I am familiar, you know, of course, not as familiar as Mr. Hoskins or Mr. Kitsch, because they have served on city council, I have not. However, my understanding is that, you know, of course, they regulate the business license. They're the ones that handle that, that's regulation. Beer and wine permits, they also handle that, that's part of their regulation ordinance. Peddler permits, you know, they handle out all sorts of different permits, and then, of course, all your city ordinances and those type of things.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. We are moving right, there are questions tonight, aren't we?
Yes, we have quick official answers.
All right. Mr. Evans, if you received a $1 million grant for the city, how would you use it and why?
Okay, $1 million grant. Grants are, they're obtained for an exact purpose, and if I had a $1 million grant, I think I would take that money, and I would improve our infrastructure, which includes our roads and our sidewalks to start with, because we have approximately 72 miles of roads inside the city limits of LaFollette, and we've been doing some repairs on them, but, you know, we're long shot from 72 miles. I know our beat streak process that's going on, that's only 1.6 miles. That's just a drop in a bucket to the entire city. But I think the $1 million would greatly be served if we used it to our infrastructure, because the grants are, you can't get a grant and then use it for 10 different things, you have to use it for exactly what it's for. So it's a singularity question as far as that goes, but I think that would be the infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. It is Meet the Candidates here on WLF 2024. This is the Meet the Candidates for city council members for the city of LaFollette, and Mark Hoskins has our next question, or next answer. I have the question. Mr. Hoskins, what will you do to hold yourself and your administration accountable to the public?
Transparency. You have to be open with the public. If you make a mistake, admit your mistake and move on, repair the problem if it's needed. When you hide things, we work for the citizens of LaFollette. You can't mislead them, you can't misrepresent things to them, you've got to be honest with them. If you're in, if we're in a bind as a community, we've got to handle it as a community. So I think transparency and communication would be the most important things. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. We are moving along, aren't we, Jim? The next question that we have is for Wayne Kitsch. How do you plan to involve the residents of the city of LaFollette in the decision-making process?
First of all, by listening. You know, a lot of residents, you can ask them if they have any ideas that would be beneficial. You know, a lot of them do. So listening would be the most important thing that we would need to do to involve the residents. Also, encourage them to come to the workshops and the council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Kitsch.
Johnny McDonald has the next question. Are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to municipal governments?
Yes, yes, and those are encompassed in federal level, state level, and city level, starting with the U.S. Constitution, then coming to the state level, Tennessee Code, then we have our municipal codes that we have to do, and the charter that we have to follow. And then Robert's Rules of Order is an essential tool that we use in how we operate and conduct our businesses and follow to keep them moving and appropriate in order. You know, one example of that would be the Tennessee Code, Chapter 6, covers a lot of the municipality and city laws that we are used and are governed by. But yes, there's a big, broad brush there to be painted on that and look at from different angles and at different levels of TCAs, the federal laws, federal laws come into play when we have issues with employment and disagreements on that level.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Johnny McDonald, we want to remind you that we're live on amfmTV.com here on WLF tonight with Meet the Candidates 2024. It's all brought to you by our friends at Big Creek Marine, and we thank you for making all this possible here tonight. We encourage your phone calls. We'll be taking your questions at the end of our questions here tonight, as well as at the end of the mayoral candidate questions, 562-1450 will get you through there. You can also email at waf@1450waf.com. Our next round of questions, we begin with Tyler Demont. And Mr. Demont, how will you work with local small businesses to support their growth?
Jim, you know, that's a good question. What I would do is I would look at their needs to see what they have. You know, a small business or small, you know, mom and pop shop is definitely a lot different than your big industry-leading business coming in, for example, like a Ripley's Aquarium or something like that, compared to your mom and pop's gas station or mom and pop's restaurant. I believe in giving a tax break. You know, I don't think that that would hurt our city at all if a new business is wanting to come in. I don't see why the city couldn't give a tax break to, you know, because they're coming in, they're spending money to bring that business here, and so if we're going to start taxing them as soon as they come in, they're not going to profit. It would take them forever to do that. So, you know, encouraging them to come is number one, but also give them that tax break that I think that the city could give and should give to all businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Let's ask, we're trying to work a mic here a little bit, and let's turn that around for Mr. Evans, who has the next question here. Thank you, Matthew Moore.
You have to love live television. You have to love live television, don't you? We've already made a few adjustments over here. I don't know if y'all noticed that. Mike, same question for you. How will you work with local businesses to support their growth?
Well, just like I mentioned in the opening statement, you have meetings, town halls with your residents to address the residents' concerns that's in the city. Will you do the same thing with the local businesses? I want to have that community involvement. I want to have that community interaction. I don't want to be the council member that's, you know, in a building all the time or in a meeting and never gets out to the public. I, I think it should be the exact opposite. You should be in the community that you serve, because the way I look at the residents of Lefollette, every single resident of Lefollette is a stakeholder, just like a stockholder in a company. You're, you're a stakeholder in the city in so many different ways, and I want to work on getting the community involvement, getting the outreach to get them to come in to us and us also go out to them. We can do that on the, the business. Have them in three, four, five times a year, whatever it takes, and just find out what their concerns are, what their needs are. I know there's, there's ways to recruit businesses. I was involved in that years ago of developing new concepts. As a private citizen, I cannot go and recruit any business for the city of Lefollette. As an elected official, I can go and use my skills and background and do that. I can make the contacts. And, and that's one of the things that I want to push, is to use those skills and backgrounds to make those contacts, to get different jobs in here, improve our per capita income. We have a workforce that drives away every day to Oak Ridge and Knoxville. I'd like to see more of those stay here. And as far as recruitment, you have to watch about, you know, I know tax breaks were mentioned yesterday and then today. We're governed by state law on tax breaks. We cannot go around promising tax breaks. Those are regulated by the state of Tennessee, and we can't, we can't do that legally. So there's a lot of different things that we can do that I think I can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Evans. It is Meet the Candidates here on WAF 2024. Mark Hoskins has our next, next question is for Mark. How do you handle criticism from constituents as well as the media?
From my experience, every decision you make, you are going to make one person happy and another person mad. You've got, you've got to put on your big boy pants, listen to their concerns, address their concerns if, if possible, and, and let it roll off your back. Just act in, in a proper manner and don't react in a bad manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We are moving through our third set of questions on the 2024 Meet the Candidates for the Lefollette city election. Wayne, how do you stay informed about events and current issues affecting the city of Lefollette?
Daily communications with the city administrator. You know, we receive magazines and, and brochures from people that represent us through TML, you know, contacting other city officials in surrounding areas, and asking citizens about their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne Kitsch. Our next question goes to Johnny McDonald. Mr. McDonald, do you think that Main Street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what do you, would you do to change that?
Well, I think that, that there's improvement to be had downtown. Businesses obviously are, are making ends meet, but looking at things and talking to the businesses, there's opportunities for growth. And I think that, that by doing, we as humans, the first thing we notice is with our eyes. We catch, that's what attracts our attention, is our eyes. So I think we need to brighten things up, get the eye appeal, if you will, in place in downtown and, and throughout the city, then make it feel safer to people as they come down, walking downtown, and comfortable to go and visit our stores. And then just continue to build it up and, and encourage the citizens to come down, create things that would attract them to the downtown. I think there's plenty of opportunity. We've seen it and experienced it, and it, and talking to the businesses when we had those events, that it definitely increased their, their bottom line dollar, and that was their revenue generated and brought into their business. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Johnny McDonald. We're going to take a break here. This is Meet the Candidates 2024 here on WAF. We're coming back here in just a moment on WAF.
You are watching the WAF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Lefollette. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tri-tune body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tri-tune body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs.
Welcome back. This is WAF 2024, Meet the Candidates for the city of Lefollette election. We are moving along with our questions tonight. We are on our fourth set of questions already, Jim. So we do want to thank our sponsor, Big Creek Marine, and we're going to jump right in. Tyler, the next question is yours. Do you think the Main Street downtown area is healthy and successful? And if not, what would you do to change that?
You know, Susan, that's a, that's a great question, and we're all going to have different opinions on that. So I think it's very interesting to have that question. I, I honestly, I'm going to say I don't think it's healthy. I mean, look at our streets that we drive on, you know, look at the, the crime that's going on. I, I mean, anybody that, that looks into stuff like that or comes down here, they're going to see that stuff and think, man, do I really want to come back to this city? And unfortunately, I have to say that. I hate to say that, because like I said, I've lived here my whole life. This is, I think, one of the greatest cities. I think it was even voted in Lefollette Press's, you know, Choice Awards. It was one of the greatest cities. And so I, I think that, you know, we, we got to improve on our, our roads. Like Mike Evans said, our roads and sidewalks has got to be improved. Also, you know, our, our crime. If, like I said last on our other debate, if the police officers would stop setting back in bushes and woods trying to catch another speeder for a ticket and, and pulling, you know, 10 cars on one 65-year-old female or a ma'am with the brake light out, you know, it takes one patrol officer to stop that vehicle, not 10. You're taking nine other officers away from important phone calls and crime. So I think that's a way to improve that. Successful-wise, I, I don't. I mean, you see more empty buildings than you do businesses, and I, I think that should be addressed. And I, you know, reaching out to businesses or, you know, future businesses, I, I think that would be one of the ways to address that.
Thank you, Tyler Demont. Let's move that microphone around for Mike. Mike Evans has the, the next question coming to him. Mr. Evans, how will you work with local and small businesses to support their growth here in Lefollette?
Well, first of all, I just want to make one statement about our local businesses. I've met and talked to just about every one of them in one form or fashion. I think we have some of the best small business owners in this entire area. How we help them is we listen to them. We ask them what they need. We ask them, how can we help in our capacity to drive your sales, to drive your traffic? Because if we can just help them increase their business 10%, that helps everyone, not only the, the independent small business, but if you can drive one business 10%, the overflow may go to the one next door or the one across the street. So it is a domino effect in business to drive the, the foot traffic. That's key, is the foot traffic. And you can do this just by listening to them. And that's what I, you know, mentioned in my opening statement, is the best improvement you can ever have in any community or any business is to listen to what they need instead of trying to present what you want to present. That, that's the best thing you can do. And that's what I would bring to the table, is I would be the community support contact for our local businesses. I would be strong about talking to them and finding out what they need.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate that. Mark, the next question is yours. If the city received a $1 million grant, what, how would you use it and why?
A million dollars.
A million dollars.
That sounds like a lot of money.
It's not anymore, is it? It's not.
It's not. Our city is bounded to the north by mountains, to the south by the lake, to the west by Jaxborough. Our industrial park is full. We have a downtown area that's not generating any wealth for the city or for the citizens, for that matter. I believe I'd talk to the Joint Economic Development Board, find out if there is any industry that's interested in coming to town. If so, where would they like to relocate? Do they need land? What can we do to help? If not, maybe talk to some of the building owners in the downtown area, find out if they're willing to sell their buildings, buy the building, upgrade it, try to bring in a retail outlet of some type, improve the foot traffic in town, the variety of, of venues in town for people to visit. Thank you.
Mark, thank you, Mark Hoskins. Our next question goes to Wayne Kitsch. And Mr. Kitsch, do you think Main Street here in downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
Main Street is, Main Street is an unattractive area, but we do have successful businesses downtown. They wouldn't be here as long as they've been had it, had they not been successful. You know, again, I would like to see some of the older vacant buildings have a facelift, done some remodeling. Maybe they can, maybe that would attract another business to come in. You know, I just, right now, the, the old Baumann Jewelry Store is being remodeled and putting a restaurant in, and that'll be another good place. The old coffee shop across the street, you know, they remodeled that building for the coffee shop. But, you know, I think we've got some improvements that we could do, but I do think the businesses down there are very successful.
Thank you for that answer, Wayne. Johnny, the next question is yours. How will you work with local businesses, small businesses to support their growth?
Well, I would seek their input, devise a plan, strategic plan, that hopefully all the council members would, would be buying to, and ask the businesses, what are you seeing that works for you? What do you need to help you improve your business? Because small businesses, just like big businesses, they have a plan. They may not go as in-depth with it and may not be as detailed, but they know what they need, they know what the trend is, and they know when those trends come. You know, here, a lot of the industry just today, one of the businessmen told me that he seen a big uptick when the lake traffic picked up. So talk to them, try to devise a plan with them, have the council, all of our department heads involved in it, and basically have a contract with each other, signing off saying, hey, we understand our needs, what we need to do to help the city grow, help our businesses grow, helping the businesses grow thusly affects the growth of our city, and that in turn gives us revenue to hopefully help retain our employees within the city by increasing their pay and benefits.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We're taking your questions for our next segment, not this segment, but the next segment, 562-1450. We have several questions already. We'd like to hear from you as well. This is going to be the toughest question of the night, gentlemen. Here we go. We start with Tyler Demont. Tyler, where are your favorite places to spend time in Lefollette?
John, Jim, I was actually, me and my wife was talking about this and my family tonight before I come. You know, unfortunately, there's not a lot of good places for, when you have children. Let's put it that way. I have children, so I have to find something that is children-friendly. If not, I'm going to have two unhappy boys. But, you know, our park, our downtown sergeant park, you know, it was recently renovated and updated. I think that's a wonderful place if you have children. But, you know, I mean, really, walking downtown i- is a wonderful place. I, I just feel that there's, there should be and needs to be more attractions and more businesses that, you know, as you're walking, you can go into, enjoy a few moments or something. So, you know, that's, that's my favorite places.
Thank you, Tyler. Mike, same question for you. Where are your favorite places in Lefollette to spend time?
Well, I, I read that question this morning, and my wife, my wife said, well, you already know what it is, just say what it is. And I said, and here we go. My favorite place in Lefollette is the baseball fields with my grandson, who's eight. I go to every one of his games. As a matter of fact, I'm missing a game tonight by being here, and that's the first game I've ever missed a boy play, basketball, soccer, anything. And, and I enjoy going to the gym, because I go to all of his games, because he's eight, but I actually coach his older brother, who's 11. I've coached him for years. I'm heavily involved with local activities with children, and I've done that for years. So that's where I like to spend my time. I actually run into Mark at the different venues all the time, knowing, because he goes, does the same thing with his grandson. So we're always bumping into one another. This year, it just so happens, his grandson's on one team and my grandson's on another team, so I have to play against each other. So that's usually fun. But that, that's where you, you spend time where you have fun with your family. That's the way I look at it. It's, it's that simple sometimes. You, you don't have to get real complicated. Wherever your family is, spend time with them.
Very good, Mike. Thank you, Mike Evans. Same question to you, Mr. Hoskins. Where are your favorite places to spend time in town?
The answers are limited. I'll agree with Mr. Evans. I like the basketball. I love Little League baseball, Little League basketball. I actually took my grandson for a walk through the city of Lefollette for the first time last year. He never thought about getting out of the car and walking down the streets and crossing the roads at the traffic lights, going down the walking trail by Big Creek, which, by the way, there's a werewolf down there. We, we had a blast, and he's asked to do it several times since. The problem is the people that you run into in that process. Now, the ball fields and the basketball courts are very safe, no problem at all. But I, I think people would actually like to get out and be able to walk around the streets of Lefollette, get a little exercise, communicate with each other, fraternize, you know, they, they stay trapped in their house too often. But I like downtown Lefollette just like it is, except for a few little touches here and there.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And thank you for that update about the werewolf. Jim, we might need to go get a story about that. I'm a little worried about that now. Wayne, same question for you. Where are your favorite places to spend time in Lefollette?
My favorite, excuse me, my favorite places are home, church, local restaurants, the local businesses, you know, and I guess with that said, let me remind everybody, we need to shop local. Thank you.
Amen to that. Thank you, Wayne Kitsch. Johnny McDonald, you have this tough question. Where are your favorite places to spend time in Lefollette?
Well, obviously, I like to eat, so I like the, I like the restaurants quite a bit. And, and as comical as it sounds, and it is reality, you have an opportunity to meet people in a really favorable setting. You know, we're, we're all southern people, and food is a staple for us, and, and it's a common ground, and you can engage people, listen to people, and find out a lot of things going on, a lot of things they're not happy with or, or they are happy with. lot of things they're not happy with or they are happy with. But all that aside, I enjoy the downtown atmosphere, walking around. I often, when I have the chance, I'm downtown during the day because I'll meet my wife somewhere on her lunch break, and I'm down here before she gets here, walking around, just looking at the city and admiring the history that's here. Because when we look at the history of Laphalat and you understand how it would come to be and how it's progressed along, it's really interesting. The parks are great, walking trails are good, and just like Mark said, you've got to watch out for the werewolves. But that's kind of my whole world. I've always been part of running around the ball fields when my children were growing up, and I enjoy that very much, seeing the kids enjoying themselves, because that's really, that's what it's all about. That's our future. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Johnny McDonald. And gravy really is a beverage here in Laphalat. We're going to take a break. We have still welcoming your calls. We have questions from you to ask to our candidates when we come back. This is Big Creek Marines, Meet the Candidates 2024, right here on WLAF.
You are watching the WLAF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Laphalat. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Laphalat, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Laphalat, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. You are watching the WLAF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Laphalat. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage.
Welcome back. We are Meet the Candidates 2024 for the City of Laphalat election. We've got five of the council candidates, I started saying members, they're wannabe members with us. Mr. Marlowe could not attend tonight. We are now at the fun section of the evening, guys. These are the calling questions. The candidates will be given one minute to answer these, and they all will be answering the same question. So here's the first question. There was a grant to keep the area behind North Tennessee Avenue clean. This is the area behind the old Doc Troutman Dental Office. That area is no longer clean, and it appears the grant has run out. What would you do to clean up that area? Tyler?
Susan, if there was a grant to begin with, and if it was lost, I'd like to know why it was lost and where it went. You know, if they had a grant, why did they not use that grant as soon as it come in if that was their plans for it? However, I would search for that grant again and go after it and make sure as soon as the city got it, that that's what it was spent on. You know, I don't see why our city should get a grant and then just leave it sitting for however long they do and then lose it just because they wanted to do something else.
Okay, thank you. We're not going to repeat the question. If you need it repeated, let us know. But Mike, your turn.
Well, I think mentioning that area about grants is, we have a lot of grants that are open projects that we really need to focus on and get those grants completed to where we can move on. And if we need to acquire new grants, that's where I would suggest contacting the East Tennessee Development District, which is an ALCOA, that supplies services for planning and grants to the local municipalities throughout East Tennessee. And let's see what we can do to focus on getting additional grants. But we really need to finish the project that's already started, because, you know, there's an old saying, whatever you focus on goes away, whatever you don't focus on seems to stay. It's, that's just an old business terminology, but it holds true in any industry. I think that's what we need to do, is just focus on getting them completed, acquire new grants, and keep moving and growing prosper.
All right. Thank you, Mike. For those just tuning in, we're talking about a grant that was used for the North Tennessee Avenue walking trail that's run out. Mark, talk to us about that grant and what you would do.
The grant that I'm aware of was for the construction of the walkway itself. That grant was utilized and hence gone, been gone for a while. I was not aware of any maintenance grants, don't know of any maintenance grants that are available for things of that nature. I was under the impression that the Parks and Recreation and the Street Department were maintaining that, and they did somewhat. I know that they did, so I've seen them do it. It's a flood-prone area when we have a lot of water, get a lot of debris that washes up. I don't have an answer for you why it has not been maintained. I actually, last week, was going to walk down through there and received a phone call and didn't have time, but it was messed up pretty bad. It would take a little bit to get it fixed, but we have the manpower to do it. All we have to do is put our minds to it and beware of the werewolf.
Beware. We're going to have some fun with that for a while. Wayne, same question. What can you tell us?
You know, what I know about that, and I've been told, is that the grant was for that walking trail, and that grant also paved the brick crossway across Central?
I believe that it was combined.
I think that's a combination. It was supposed to go right on up the creek behind the old Milling Building and go to Tank Springs. I do think that that grant, part of that grant, it was in phases. I do think that some of it's still available.
Okay, thank you. Johnny, your turn to tell us about the North Tennessee Avenue Grant.
Well, I'm not familiar with that particular grant. I'm familiar with the time that Mr. Hoskins was talking about, where they constructed that area, but I'm not familiar with the maintenance grant. I haven't heard of anything of that nature for that. Again, I think that's an area that is prone to flooding, but we build it, we've got a grant to build it, then I think we need to keep it up, and we've got the ability to do that. And I think it would be relatively inexpensive already having the mechanisms in place to go back and catch it up to date and get it to where it's usable again. Thank you.
Johnny, thank you. Johnny McDonald, it is Meet the Candidates here on WLAF. These are your questions. You've called in or emailed to us here, and we're going to go through a couple from Susan, a couple from me. I will read here. And we go back to Tyler Demont. Mr. Demont, will the city ever have the traffic light synchronized to better accommodate traffic here in town?
You know, that's a good one. A lot of people have talked to me about that. And honestly, if we stop and sit and think for a minute, if the red light at Red Roof and Cross Smith Funeral Home doesn't get you, you better believe and bet that the one by People's Bank and, you know, Community Trust is going to get you. So don't even press the accelerator, just go ahead and let it coast on down because it's going to get you. You know, that's something that I think needs to be looked into. I'm not for sure of how old those red lights are, but I do believe there should be some updating to those.
Very good. Thank you. Tyler Demont. And Mr. Evans, Mike will pose the same question to you. Will the city ever have the traffic light synchronized to better accommodate traffic?
Well, I think it's a common problem in any city you go. We're just like everybody else. The traffic lights are controlled by traffic. And your main foreland going through town, you have a certain amount of traffic that flows, and the lights are controlled in any normal situation by that flow. It's when the auxiliary's traffic comes up, that's what triggers the stop. It's simple, just simple math. That's why it's always been. The side entry is what triggers the red light on the main to give them access across heavy traffic. That's the simple answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Mike Evans. Mark Hoskins will pose this question to you about synchronizing the traffic lights. Mark?
Just so happens, on my way to this meeting, I stopped at Walmart as a result of the traffic light at Toe String for some reason. They've got engineers that can come in and do a steady traffic study for different times of the day or night, of course. You know, the traffic coming onto the main drag, but primarily relieving the main drag of its congestion. They can do a design, they can program the lights that we have. It was brought up several years ago. Nobody wanted to spend, at that time, $10,000 for the engineering. Then you have to have somebody trained to do the programming. It can be done. It's going to cost a little money. We're going to have to find somebody to do the programming for us, but all the technology's there. Thank you.
Very good. So it can be done?
Yes.
That's good news.
So I'm not the only person at the traffic light down here on 13th Street at 3:00 a.m. Let's go to Wayne Kitsch. Wayne, same question for you, Mr. Kitsch. Will the city ever have the traffic light synchronized?
Well, with as many traffic lights as we have, from the east end to the south end of Laphalat, you're going to get caught by two or three traffic lights, maybe more. But you know, the state has the final say-so about the traffic lights. We tried, when I first got on the council back in 2008, I asked about doing away with the traffic light in front of Baumann Jewelers. I mean, it's a three-way traffic light. You've got access to go around either way, and you could take that traffic light out. The state wouldn't let us. So it is a problem, and the state can fix it with their help, with our help.
Very good. Wayne, thank you. Mr. Kitsch. Johnny McDonald, he knows a thing or two about stoplights, being a former state trooper, retired, of course. And Mr. McDonald, will the city ever synchronize the traffic lights?
Well, and it's a very good question, and likewise, as all of us have said, and I'll reiterate, you know, we've all got caught by it, and it's always at an inopportune time. But to what Mr. Evans said, there is mechanisms that trigger the lights on certain things. And I can tell you that there's sensors in most of these lights through town that are on the cross streets that do the triggering when a vehicle pulls up there, that is supposed to trigger a timer, if you will, to cycle that light through to let them get across their cross street. I know we've got some sensors that are not working or inoperable. That's expensive, and it's also going to cause inconvenience when they start digging up pavement to fix those. But to answer your question, to get it to where you can leave one end of town and go all the way through the other end without getting caught in a light, and if you catch it just right, I've done it once or twice, but that's been, I've been luck of the draw. Nobody come up on the side streets and triggered them or whatever. So it'd be hard to get it synchronized to that, but there is a mechanism in place, and with a little maintenance could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. We are on our third of four calling questions for the night. We appreciate everybody that has called in or emailed. Here's the next question, gentlemen. We have a homeless problem in the city of Laphalat. It's also bringing a crime problem. How would you address it?
You know, that's a good question. And again, we're all going to have mixed opinions and mixed, you know, feelings about this. However, I believe in a shelter. I believe in implementing a shelter. Our current setting, Mayor, as I'm aware of, over the winter, did not even try to offer help to these people. Now, I'm all about helping, but I'm not about trying to get them in off the street into the center and then just sit there and lay up. You know, we ought to have plans in place to where we bring them in, and within so many days, or 30 days, 60 days, help them get a job, help them get their own housing. You know, it's, other cities have done it, the county has done it. I don't see why the city of Laphalat can't do it.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Mike, same question for you. How would you address the homelessness and the co-occurring crime problem in Laphalat?
Well, the overall crime problem is, it's been increasing, not just here, but all over the country. That's another one of those items, you know, where you focus on will go away. We just need to increase our focus if we need to bring in some help from the state or federal level to address some of the concerns. Because our biggest concern is, we have a lot of drug use, drug trafficking, and that creates auxiliary problems on its own. You know, people get hooked on the drugs, they quit their jobs. That's how, a large percentage, when I've researched this in the past, a large percentage of the homeless crisis is the drug use. And to be honest with you, you know, this is a personal thing I want to say real quick. I have a little experience with the homeless drug. My youngest brother has been on drugs since he was 16 years old. He's 51 now, and he will not take the help. He will not give up his drugs in order to take the rehabilitation, in order to take the help, in order to put a roof over his head. He lives out in Oregon, on the West Coast, between Oregon and what's called Slab City in California, and has lived out there for years. That's the problem we have all across the country. They have opportunities, but they just don't want to give up the drugs, because they have to pass a drug test to get the roof over their head. I just wanted to share that little, that's what more personally I usually want to get, but that's the reality of the situation.
Well, Mike, thank you for sharing that personal bit of information with us. We always appreciate it when you all do that. Mark, same question for you. Tell us about the homelessness, the crime, and what your thoughts are on rectifying that.
It's a very difficult situation. I actually took it upon myself to go out in the streets and talk to some of these folks. Churches used to have little functions where they would feed them on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon, and I'd talk to them. And there are several reasons for being homeless. One, a true homeless person has had very bad luck, bad health, lost their job, mental illness, physical illness, and I really wish we could help each and every one of those. Some are as a result of drug addiction. They will not conform. They would rather have the drugs as life itself. And the third is, we have people that are healthier than we are, not using drugs, but do not want to conform to society. They're not going to get a job, they've got a social security check, they've got a cell phone. Thank you. They've got a cell phone, they're happy where they are. Now, we have to address those three problems separately.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Wayne, will you please share your thoughts on the homelessness and the crime issues?
Well, our police department battles this problem, and you know, they can't devote their whole time to that, but we have, we've run them and flushed them out of tents on the creek banks. They've run them from one spot to another. They get into abandoned houses, they break in, they sleep there. You know, it's a real problem, and I really couldn't tell you what the answer is, but most of it is drug addiction.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. We are talking about the homelessness and the crime issue here on the Candidates Forum. Johnny, share your thoughts. What would you do about it?
Well, first off, I think we can't just put our head in the sand, so to speak, and hope it goes away, because it continues to grow. I think we all have noticed that at different times. What I have seen in my experience is, you usually have basically three different types of people. You have the people who are truly down on their luck and having a rough time in life right now. They need a helping hand. You have those that are drug users, abusers, and that usually translates into mental health issues. And then you have a party that's a criminal element. They're using that to hide behind sometimes. So I think the easy thing and the availability to implement it as readily here is to have our police officers trained and be able to interact with people. You know, there's nothing wrong if you're walking down the street and then start talking to somebody and develop something and help reconnect people that are lost, separated from their family, or give them to... from their family, or give them the services in the county that we have or outside of the county. Thank you.
Johnny, thank you. Johnny McDonald. Our last question tonight for the council members, council candidates here for the Lefolite City Council on Meet the Candidates 2024, all brought to you by Big Creek Marine. Does anyone have plans for the empty buildings in Lefolite? We toss this question to Tyler Demont. Tyler?
Jim, that, that's a good question as well. I believe that these empty buildings, you know, as long as they're not too far gone to where they, you know, would just be cheaper and better to demolish them. If they can be remodeled, let, let's try to talk to organizations and businesses to bring them in. Let, let's help, see what we can do to help them get that place remodeled, back up and running, so that we can bring local small businesses in here, or, you know, some sort of attractions for kids. I mean, you know, you could bring attractions such as bowling alleys, you can bring attractions such as, you know, arcades, just something. It don't have to be some big one like you get at Pigeon Forge. You know, it could be small, but that's where it starts. It starts at that small bottom level, and it works its way up. So, that, I think that's how it could be addressed.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
To Mike Evans we go. Mike, does anyone have plans for the empty buildings in Lefolite?
Well, I think it just goes back to a couple of other things that I've said about the community involvement, getting the leadership involved with the local businesses to help with these vacant buildings. There's a lot you can do on recruitment of small businesses. You don't have to always go after 200-person employers. I, I just assume have 10, 20s, you know, if you still need 200 people. Smaller buildings, smaller employment staff, and, and there's a lot of different avenues that we can go for on some of these relocation of businesses. There's a lot of opportunities in the north with the current economic situation that we could probably find a few businesses that might be willing to relocate down here. The cost of living is so much better. The economy here is so much better. The housing is so much better and so much cheaper. That's what I want to concentrate on if I get into office. That's gonna be one of the first things I do, is start every contact I can get a hold of that I know, and then what they know, and just go after some northern businesses. And you don't have to spend time going after real big ones, just get as many as you can. And that will alleviate a lot of the vacant buildings because we can put them in it.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
To Mark Hoskins we go. Mr. Hoskins, does anyone have plans for the empty buildings in Lefolite?
Unfortunately, the area between Tennessee Avenue and Indian Avenue is a floodplain. And according to FEMA regulations, if you have to do a construction to a building remodeling that exceeds the half of the, the original value of the building, the current value of the building, then the building has to be demolished. And there are some avenues to get around that. There are other avenues that you could remodel it and still be within the floodplain. I don't know how companies feel about, you know, relocating from a nice dry place to a floodplain, but we could take that million dollars that Susan is gonna give us and improve the face. You know, we've got, we all know that we need that facelift downtown. Mike has a good point with the small shops. We've got older retirees moving to the area, some may not even be retired, that are working for, you know, large outfits, large companies, GM, IBM, wherever. We could utilize them in a networking process for that. Thank you.
Mark, thank you, Mark Hoskins.
We go to Wayne Kits. Mr. Kits, does anyone have any plans for the empty buildings in, in Lefolite?
Well, unfortunately, you know, the city doesn't own those buildings, and we have helped. For example, the old Riggs Drugstore on the corner, there's a fellow that's in negotiations right now to buy that building. He wants to put in a restaurant and maybe turn the upstairs apartments, when he remodels it, into an Airbnb. But we don't know how far that's gonna get, and we really don't know if he's gonna be able to turn it into an Airbnb. I think some of those apartments were prohibited from being used by the fire marshal just a few months ago. So, you know, it's hard for us to do anything other than help.
Thank you, Wayne Kits. That was formerly the Riggs U Building, and then for us baby boomers like Coach Kits, that, that is the Riggs Building on that corner there to kind of clarify, clarify that location for some of our younger folks tuned in tonight. And for Johnny McDonald, the same question. Does anyone have plans for the empty buildings in downtown Lefolite? Johnny?
I'll go back to the strategic plan I spoke about earlier. I think that's something we could incorporate into that plan, involve the business, or the building owners in that plan, and see if there's some way that we may be able to implement that building into business for the growth of the city. I mean, if it's, as Mark says, in the floodplain, and we're not able to help them overcome the requirements of remodeling or whatever, and recruiting, then maybe we can help them with the destruction of it or demolition of it, and, and getting something in there that may be a value. And, you know, we have a, a pretty serious parking issue downtown, and that may be a good parking lot, you know, depending on where it's at and what it is. But I think, again, that's something that we need as a council to put in a strategic plan and, and pull those people in and get them involved in what their hopes are for that building and how we can help them. Thank you.
Very good. Johnny McDonald, thank you.
Susan, thank you tonight. This is our council segment of Meet the Candidates here on WLF. Thanks to Tyler Demont, Mike Evans, Mark Hoskins, Wayne Kits, Johnny McDonald. Jimmy Marlowe not able to make it tonight, but gentlemen, thank you so much for playing along with us here. We're gonna reset the studio, and we'll be back with the mayoral candidates here on WLF Meet the Candidates 2024, brought to you by Big Creek Marine.
You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Lefolite. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefolite, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefolite, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefolite, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that, too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lefolite, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Lefolite. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage.
It is Meet the Candidates 2024. Glad you're along with Susan Sarp, Jim Freeman here, and we have our mayoral candidates for the city of Lefolite to bring about and give us some introductions of each of themselves. And of course, we have questions for them lined up. We welcome your questions at 562-1450. We'll have a section later in the program to ask your questions to our candidates tonight. Running for mayor of Lefolite, Johnny Burge, Philip Farmer, Scotty Kits, Buford Prophet. Mr. Farmer unable to be with us tonight, and we begin with the introductions. We'll start with Mr. Burge. Johnny Burge will have two minutes, as each candidate will, to introduce themselves to our audience here. Mr. Burge?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank 1450 WLF, Jim and Susan for hosting this debate. My name is Johnny Burge, and I'm a candidate for the office of mayor in the city of Lefolite. Lifelong resident of Lefolite, born and raised here, don't intend to go anywhere. I'm married to Laura Wilson Burge, and we've been married, actually just celebrated our 39th wedding anniversary a couple of weeks ago. We have four daughters, Jessica, Jamie, Hannah, and Emily. They all reside in Lefolite and raising their families here. And recently retired from the Parks and Recreation Department after spending 20 years there as the director, and 20 years also I worked at the Public Works Department. So, I've devoted my life to Lefolite, and I just wanted to give back and to Lefolite. And I think I've had a wonderful time out campaigning, talking to people, and I look forward to seeing as many people as I can, but if I do miss you, I want to take this time to humbly ask for your vote and support in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. We now go to candidate Mr. Scott, Scotty Kits, to introduce himself.
Thank you. Unfortunately, they're giving me two minutes here, WLF. I'll try to do this quickly as possible, guys. I am Scott Kits. As y'all know, I am seeking the opportunity to be served as your Lefolite city mayor. I was born and raised in Lefolite, one of six children. I have four brothers who still live here. Many of you knew my younger brother, Mark, just passed away last year. My dad was a coal miner. My mom was a shirt factory, she worked at the shirt factory. I have one son that I raised on my own since he was a baby, had done the diaper deal, everything else, and I have three lovely great-grandchildren, Caleb, Blaine, Ellie May, and along with my son's fiance, Winter. I have worked as a coal miner, employee at Woodson Supermarket and other places in the county, including working as a Campbell County School System custodian. I have worked in the antique business for 48 years. I've been with Stewart Promotions Flea Market out of Louisville, Kentucky for 23 years. I started my political career in 2002 as your county commissioner in the second district, as I'm very proud to serve that district as well. Since that time, I have served on several boards, and the reason also I want to be the Lefolite mayor, it's not been an easy decision to step down as the second district commissioner, as I consider it a privilege and honor to represent the residents of the second district. Otherwise, time's running out. They're giving me 30 seconds. I wish I could give you all more, but at this time, that's about all I have to say, and looking forward to being your city mayor of Lefolite.
Good, Kits, thank you. We'll, we'll be back to you here in a moment. Let's now go to Buford Prophet. Mr. Prophet, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Buford Prophet. I'm running for the mayor of the city of Lefolite. I have a deep commitment, commitment to improve the city of Lefolite. With 25 years of business experience and a proven track record in community service, I bring both expertise and a strong dedication to addressing the key issues we face. One of my top priorities is to tackle the wasteful spending. We need to ensure that taxpayer dollars are used efficiently so we can invest in our community and provide the service that truly matters. Additionally, our city is grappling with a severe drug crisis and rising homelessness. I'm determined to implement effective solutions to these challenges, focusing on both immediate relief and long-term strategy to create a safe, more supportive environment for everyone. Economic growth is another critical area. I believe that by fostering innovation and supporting local businesses, we can stimulate our economy and create more opportunities for residents. My goal is to promote transparency and efficiency in every aspect of local government, ensuring that we are accountable and responsible to the voters. Together, we can perform Lefolite into a thriving community where everyone has a chance to succeed. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my vision with you tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Prophet, we now begin our questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer questions here on Meet the Candidates, WLF here in 2024. We go to Johnny Burge for the first question. Mr. Burge, what do you believe to be the three strongest skills you bring to the office?
Well, Jim, I think, first off, my leadership skills. I have the ability, the ability to build a positive culture within the city government, and it's a priority to me to lead by example. I believe in inspiring and motivating everyone to be their best. Number two, collaboration, my ability to work well with others. I've worked with various organizations down through the years while serving as the Parks and Recreation Director, such as Louis Bluey, Postmark Lefolite, the Lions Club, the Boys and Girl Scouts, and many festivals and events. So, I think that the collaboration is a very important part there, and also problem-solving. Because of my 40 years' experience working with the city of Lefolite, I have developed strong critical thinking skills where I can face complex challenges, brainstorm my options, and implement strategies and solutions.
Thank you, Johnny. If you are just tuning in, this is the mayoral section of the Lefolite City Council, Meet the Candidates. Also laying out the ground rules a little bit, we did provide them with questions ahead of time. Questions were randomly selected tonight, but every candidate will not be answering the same question at the same time. Got to keep it interesting for the viewers, don't we, Jim? All right. Scott, the next question is for you. What are your goals for the office of mayor?
My goal as mayor will be to work with the city council, city departments and agencies, as well the citizens of Lefolite, to move our city forward and to improve our community and the quality of life for everyone living in the area. Our city is a wonderful place to live, but I am sure we can all agree that we can have improvements, opportunities. I feel- I feel we have some opportunities. Number one, improve the quality of life for our communities and senior citizens. Investigate recreation growth opportunities for our young people, as they are our future. Improve our city streets, stop the waste of irresponsible spending of our tax dollars. Identify opportunities for obtaining grants so that we can make improvements in needed areas. Continue to look for opportunities to recognize our veterans and the debt that we owe to them for securing and defending the freedoms that we enjoy in this great country of ours. We will not be able to accomplish all our goals overnight, but working together, we can start the process and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitsch. We now go to Mr. Prophet, Buford Prophet, with the next question. Mr. Prophet, what experience do you have working with large budgets?
Oh, bear with me. Bear with me.
Okay.
Just like every family in Campbell County, I have learned to manage budgets of all sizes. I have learned to manage budgets of all sizes through my business experience, from handling small to large budgets. My 25 years in business have equipped me with the skills to manage resource and make informed financial decisions. That's it, done, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Buford. We appreciate that answer. Johnny, the next question is for you. How will you work with local businesses and small businesses to support their growth?
Well, Susan, I believe fostering a thriving local economy and creating a supportive environment for our small business owners so that we have everything we need here locally so our tax dollars stay here at home. We need to continue to emphasize our shop local campaign and encourage our community to support our local business. We can work with local venues such as the Ball Farm Center where we can organize and network and support networking events, trade shows, and markets that will allow small businesses to connect and promote their product and services.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. The next question for Mr. Kitsch. Mr. Kitsch, what's the number one challenge facing the next mayor when it comes to management of the department and working with the city council?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, sir. What's the number one challenge facing the next mayor when it comes to management of the department and working with the city council?
Really, Jim, that's a good question. From what I see, communication is the main challenge. If the mayor and the council members and departments heads do not openly communicate and keep each other informed, the city suffers. We cannot have individual departments operating as a separate entity. We must work together as one, a cohesive organization for the betterment of our city. Do I have more time?
You have 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
60.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
As I stated before on opening statement, I started my political career in 2002 as a county commissioner in the second district. Since that time, I have served three terms as active commissioner until recently, when I chose to resign from the position to seek this position of your Lapholat city mayor. It was not an easy decision, as I considered it a privilege and an honor to represent the residents of the second district, as well as the residents of all of Campbell County. I feel that I did an excellent job of serving the citizens of Campbell County in that capacity during my time as commissioner. I am so proud to say that I am very involved and informed, as rarely missed a commission meeting. I maintain audience attendance on 14 to 17 committees, including the Financial Management System and the Water Committee. We will go to that rest of it when we come back, if I got time.
Okay, we are asking you to stick to the questions we're asking, Scott.
Yeah, but if I have extra time, you said I could come back and do that.
All right, Buford?
Yes.
This question is for you.
Yes.
How would you handle conflicts among the council or the board, or in this case, people in the studio?
To handle conflicts among the council and board, I would promote open communication and encourage everyone to share their views. I'd focus on finding common ground and working together to solve issues in a way that benefits the community. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. Our next question is for Mr. Burge. What experience do you have with large budgets?
Well, I started my political career in 2000, and the voters of the third district elected me for six consecutive terms. I recently resigned July 30th of this year, which my term was up, but I had to resign in order to run for mayor. But I have worked with the largest school budget in the county, that being the school department, and also the school department being the largest employer of the county. And I've worked with several board members and actually seven different school directors down through the years to manage, you know, the largest budget. And I can proudly say we always had a surplus. We never overspent our budget during that time, and that's not only a credit to me, that's a credit to other board members and the director of schools and the central office staff. And also, I have managed the Parks and Recreation Department. I prepare the budget for the last 20 years and present it to council for approval. It's about a $700,000 budget, around 10 employees, and I can proudly also say there that we've never overspent our budget. We've stayed within budget, and I am very proud of that. So yes, I do have experience working with budgets and prepared day one to serve as your mayor if elected.
All right, thank you, Johnny. Scott, we're going to ask you the next question, and it is how would you handle conflicts among the council?
I would work to address conflict among council members by working to find a common ground. And a democracy disagreements are going to happen. However, I would hold any disagreements about an issue against my city members, the council members as well. I would respectfully listen to each council person's opinion or point of view, and then encourage open, respectful discussions of various viewpoints. I would encourage each council member to conduct themselves in a professional manner and consider the pros and the cons of the issues under discussions while being open-minded about how the best solution to the issue might be determined. It is in the best interest of the mayor and council to work toward one common goal, and that goal is what is in the best interest of the citizens.
Mr. Kitsch, thank you. Our next question for Mr. Prophet, and it is what are your goals for the office of mayor?
Save taxpayers' money, address the drug problem, and collaborate with the county government to tackle homeless and potential through a shelter. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. We're going to take a break. It's all brought to you tonight by Big Creek Marine. We want to send a special thank to the folks at Winter Furniture, Tom and Tommy, helping us with our set here tonight, and Nancy Bright, Aaron Hopkins here on staff getting everything ready to go for us today. We thank you for connecting here to WLF. It's Meet the Candidates 2024. More questions to come. We'd like to hear what your questions are. Call us, 562-1450. We'll have a segment at the end of the program, or next to last segment of the program, with your questions via email at 1450waf@1450waf.com, or by the phone, 423-562-1450. Back in a moment here on WLF.
You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Lapholat. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.
Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in Lapholat, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs.
You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of Lapholat. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine Sales Service Storage.
And we are back live with the 2024 Meet the Candidates for the City of Lapholat mayoral contest. We are on our fourth set of questions, starting with Johnny Burge. Johnny, what would you do to hold yourself accountable to the public?
Well, Susan, I think, first off, transparent communication. We can do things such as share updates on projects, budgets, and decisions with the public through newsletters, social media, and community meetings. Another thing we can do is publish performance reports to the public that outlines achievements for areas of improvement. So that's a couple of things that come to mind quickly that we could do to hold ourselves accountable to the public, and always willing to be able to listen to the citizens of Lapholat with their concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Our next question from Mr. Kitsch. Mr. Kitsch, what do you believe to be the three strongest skills that you bring to the office of mayor?
The three, okay. All righty. Jim, good question. I believe that my service as county commissioner for three terms demonstrates some of the strongest qualifications, which I think are. One, number one, my ability to see issues from the common person's perspective. I'm down to level to the people, they understand me, and they feel comfortable about coming to me to talk with me. I have grown up in this area and have seen firsthand the needs and challenges facing our citizens. My ability to work well with others to meet and achieve our common goals. Lastly, my ability to look at the target outcome and identify the most cost-effective, effective path to reaching that goal. I am not seeking the office of mayor for my personal gain, but I am seeking this office to help improve our city and our community and quality of life for all of our citizens.
All right, thank you, Scott. We appreciate that. Buford, the next question is for you. How will you work with local businesses to support their growth in the community?
Downtown area is vital for our city's privacy and the economy health. It might not be fully utilized at the point to improve this. We could support local businesses, host more community events, and enrich the area's appeal. Bringing back events like the ATV Festival and the Lapholat Homecoming, along with creating spaces for markets and other activities that could affect more visitors and boost local commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. Our next question is for Mr. Burge, and we ask, what are your goals for the office of mayor?
Jim, my goals for the office of mayor would be to implement a five-year road program to keep our roads up to par, you know, starting with our worst roads that are in bad condition. And I've had a lot of people on the campaign trail talk about sidewalk improvements. We had, you know, a lot of sidewalks installed in the 60s and 70s that are now deteriorated, and we've got a couple roads, especially out toward the Loop Road area coming into East Beach. It's very dangerous, so we've had some requests for that. And I think, you know, sidewalk improvement's a big thing. And also, we need to support our local business, maintain and support our police and fire department, and all city employees, continue to expand on our recreation facilities. And I'd also would like to form a unity in the community committee to plan festivals and events, and I think that, you know, will be made up of citizens of Lapholat. So that's a few things of my goals that I would want to do.
All right, thank you, Johnny. Scott, the next question is for you. How would you hold yourself accountable to the community as mayor?
What number was that?
I'll read the question. How would you hold yourself accountable to the community as mayor?
You, let's see, looking for it here. Jim, what number is that?
We don't have a number.
Well, I don't have the number. Let's do this. Let's go, Scott, you find that answer. Let's go to Mr. Prophet for the next question here, and we'll pass. Let's do that. You find that answer, and we'll come back to you here in just a second. Our question next from Mr. Prophet is, Buford, what do you believe to be the three strongest skills that you bring to the office if elected mayor?
Honesty, trustworthy, and respect for others is essential. Without showing respect, you can't expect to get respect. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Prophet, thank you. And let's go back to Mr.
Do you want to read the question again?
Yes, sir, we will. How would you hold yourself? Okay, what would you do to hold yourself and your administration accountable to the
Well, that question was read totally different from what I have. I've got it right in front of me.
Okay, well, let's go. Let's start that two minutes.
Okay, you said, before you start tying me, that question was totally read different to me. What, because I passed it up three times. What will you do to hold yourself and your administration accountable to the public?
Okay, go.
Transparency is a key to holding myself and my administration accountable to the public. We must be an administration that is willing to listen to our people, to determine what their needs are, and identify the items of importance to the citizens. Transparency helps to foster the faith and trust of our people. It leads to abuse of power and secrecy, it does. It leads, when you do secrecy, hold things back from the public, it leads to abuse of the power and reduces accountability. Transparency results with the public officials being held accountable for their actions and their areas of responsibility. Transparency ensures accountability, openness, and communication between the public and our administration. I've got the right question here. It wasn't read to me correctly.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kitsch. And that concludes the questions we have. We're going to go to your questions. You've called in this evening. Next, after this timeout, this is Meet the Candidates 2024 on WLF, brought to you by Big Creek Marine.
You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage.
Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in LaFollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Call 423-494-5504. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in LaFollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in LaFollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Big Creek Marine, the place where service and sales come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in LaFollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Call 423-494-5504.
It is Meet the Candidates 2024 here on WLF. We'd like to thank all those of you who've taken time to call in questions for us tonight, for our candidates tonight. And we will go similar to what we did, or exactly what we did with the council candidates, and that is, so these are questions from your calls, your emails. Each candidate will be asked the same question, and we'll have one minute to respond. We begin with Johnny Burge. And Mr. Burge, the city of Corbin, the city of LaFollette, similar in size. Corbin, of course, in Kentucky. Uh, there is an arena in the city of Corbin. And, uh, would you be in favor of having an arena in LaFollette for concerts and events?
Absolutely. Uh, you know, I've, uh, know a lot of people that's been to that arena. I've never been to it, but absolutely, yes, that would be a great benefit for, uh, LaFollette, and I would certainly be in support of that, uh, given the opportunity. Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. We go to Mr. Kits with the same question. And Mr. Kits, the city of Corbin, Kentucky, and the city of LaFollette, similar in size. There is an arena in Corbin, and has been for some time. Uh, would you be in favor of having an arena in LaFollette for concerts and events and such?
Yes, sir. Uh, I would be in favor of that 100%. Uh, me being, uh, your, uh, LaFollette city mayor, I would, uh, explore and, uh, go up there and also go to other places to, uh, try to, uh, help get something like that here and share it with, uh, the public and as well the council, and, uh, move forward and try to finally get something done, uh, for the city of LaFollette's children. Uh, a lot of children, uh, Jim, uh, and, uh, Susan, don't have an opportunity to play sports. They, they do want to do other things, and we need something in those facilities to do for those children and everything. So most certainly, I would get in my vehicle, and I would explore different places, and yes, I would be, be definitely 100% for that, Jim and Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Kits. We'll pose the same question to Mr. Profit, and that is, uh, the city of Corbin, Kentucky, the city of LaFollette, similar in size. Corbin has an arena, LaFollette does not. Would you be in favor of an arena in LaFollette for concerts and events and such?
Well, of course, yes, sir. I'd be in particular depth to see that come, providing it don't cost the taxpayers that kind of money. We look, we need to look at grants for that. If we can get grants, I'm for it 100%. I've been to that arena, and I know exactly where it's at. Yes, I'm for it.
Okay. Thank you, Buford. We appreciate that answer. Here is the next question. This one was actually emailed into us earlier in the week. Johnny, would you be willing to be in office with no salary or benefits? Please explain your answer.
Yes, I mean, I'm, uh, obviously not doing it for the benefits. Uh, you know, I've recently retired and, you know, I, I could, uh, go home and, and live comfortable, but it's, uh, uh, that's not a driving factor for me. So, yes, I'd be willing to do that, uh, if need be, and certainly.
Okay. Thank you, Johnny. Scott, the same question to you. Would you be willing to be in office with no salary or benefits? And please explain your answer.
Uh, yes, I, I'm actually a workaholic. I don't need the money. I want to give to the people, the citizens of LaFollette. Uh, when I die, uh, they're going to be digging up my yard for blue jars for money. So we don't need any money. I work hard, and, uh, yes, uh, I, I want to dedicate my life and my soul and to everything and heart to the city of LaFollette. Yes, I don't need the money. It's not about the money for me. Uh, I want to put everything into the city of LaFollette and give back what the city of LaFollette has gave me and my family, Susan.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Buford, same question. Would you be willing to be in office with no salary or benefits? And please explain your answer.
Yes, I would. I would simply be glad to do it. Matter of fact, I'm surprised that nobody else has did it already, because, hey, it's not that great a salary, and it's taxpayers' money, you know? So I'm for it. Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, Mr. Profit. We go to Johnny Burge for our next question from a caller, and this question is, when it comes to being mayor, will you be a hands-on mayor or allow department heads to, to be in charge of their departments?
Well, again, having worked for the city, uh, I know the city as well as anybody. Uh, the department heads would be able to run, uh, their departments. Uh, um, I would go through the city administrator, that's how the charter spells it out. Uh, a mayor or a council member cannot give a direct order to a city employee. It must come through the city administrator. And, uh, so that's, uh, one thing that, again, you know, I've lived that. We've got some good department heads. They know how to do their job, so they don't need me interfering with it. Uh, I do plan to be in my office, uh, from eight to 10 a.m. every morning to take, uh, you know, complaints if the citizens needs to come in and, and have a concern. I'd be willing to listen and, and pass it on to the administrator, and, uh, that's how I will operate as mayor, uh, not, uh, not be trying to dictate, you know, and, uh, again, but it's the administrator's job to run the city.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. We'll pose the same question to you, Mr. Kits, and that is, when it comes to being mayor, will you be a hands-on mayor or allow the department heads to, to be in charge of their departments?
You never want to interfere with the, uh, department heads', uh, business of the city unless they've got an issue or a problem, and they come to me and, or the council for that matter, to handle those issues. We str- we strictly go by the book, uh, through, uh, the city. We have a charter we go by. Uh, like, uh, my predecessor, I probably know the city probably just as better than he, for the fact is, is, uh, I've been in the city all of my life. I know the common folks, people, and, uh, it, I, I can, I can handle, uh, all these problems, and I will be in my office more than two hours a day. I'll be in there from eight o'clock in the morning, uh, till, uh, sometimes probably, uh, closing time, four or five o'clock. Uh, if that could be one day, that could be every day. But I'm going to answer all the, uh, citizens' problems and their concerns, and I'm always an open book. Everybody's welcome to, uh, to my office, and, uh, I would ask everyone to come, uh, to my office, feel free to, and I'll be there to help you.
Very good, Mr. Kits. Thank you. To Mr. Profit we go, and your question is, when it comes to being mayor, will you be a hands-on mayor or allow the department heads to be in charge of their departments?
Well, I've worked closely with the city administrator, so that's his job. Uh, and we would collaborate and discuss it and find out the problems and correct. Now, I'm going to have once a month meetings with the public, once a month meetings extra with the public to find the problems, solve the problems. If you don't know it, you can't fix it.
Okay. Thank you, Buford. We appreciate that answer. Here is the next question that's been called in tonight, and it's actually a two-part question. First question is, how much have you spent on your campaign, and has anyone contributed over $500, and if so, who was it?
So far, I've spent around $3,000 on my campaign, and I have not had a contribution over $500.
Okay. Thank you, Johnny. Scott, next, uh, same question. How much have you spent on your campaign? Has anyone contributed over $500, and if so, who was it?
Uh, no, ma'am. I haven't had anyone to give me that kind of money. I spent, uh, close to $6,000. I started this campaign in May, uh, working diligently, door to door, uh, continuously working every night, and I will do so, uh, Suzie, Susan, all the way through, uh, November the 5th. Uh, but yeah, it's been a long, uh, campaign and, uh, and a hard financial campaign, so, uh, the, the question is that, uh, I've been, uh, I've spent around $6,000, and I have not got anything over $500 from anyone.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Buford, same question. How much have you spent on your campaign, and has anyone over, I'm sorry, has anyone contributed over $500, and if so, who was it?
I, I spent less than $1,000 on my campaign, and I have no contributions, donations coming to me, none.
Mr. Profit, thank you. Our candidates, Johnny Burge. Thank you, Mr. Burge. Philip Farmer, unable to be with us tonight. Scott, Scotty Kits, and Buford Profit, our candidates for mayor for the city of LaFollette. We thank you for connecting tonight to WLF for our Meet the Candidates 2024. We, uh, will have this where you can watch it on demand, starting tomorrow morning here on WLF, 1450WLF.com. Thank you. A special thank you to our friends at Big Creek Marine for making all this possible here tonight, and everybody behind the scenes. We thank you. Susan, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And we appreciate everything tonight from everyone. We wish you a good night, and thank you for connecting to WLF.
Come together. Big Creek Marine is your local service shop for your boat. Bring your boat to them, or they can come to your dock slip. With over 20 years of experience, Big Creek Marine does it all. Interested in a new boat? They have that too. Whether it's the luxury brand Veranda with its tritone body giving you a smoother ride, or a versatile Seapro that can take you fishing or cruising down the lake. Located at 153 Shanghai Road in LaFollette, the staff is ready to help you with all your boat needs. Call 423-494-5504.
You are watching the WLF Meet the Candidates Forum live. During this program, you will meet the men running for office in the city of LaFollette. To call in questions for your candidates, give us a call right now at 423-562-1450. Any questions presented to the panel must pertain to the operations of the city and upcoming elections. Personal questions will be screened out. The Meet the Candidates Forum is a presentation of Big Creek Marine. Sales, service, storage.